One second. Commissioner Mudge wanted to go grab a charger and then we can get started.
All righty. Good morning. We have everybody we're looking for from both sides. All right, all right, excellent. Thanks for joining us. We are here at 10 o'clock for a work session with the board and the St. Vincent's Hospital Board and Administration. And Tim, do you want to give us an overview? Or do we have, do you want to just jump in on?
Okay, sure. So we've asked John Gardner and Kelly Johnson, interim CEO and CFO, to provide an update on St. Vincent's audit and financial position, which they agreed to do. And so I think when we're ready, I know Francina is someone to introduce. But other than that, I think everybody knows each other unless you want to do introductions.
Sure. Why don't, I mean, yeah, why don't we just go around the room and do that? Sarah Mudge, Lake County Commissioner.
Jeff Idler, Lake County Commissioner.
Caitlin Marcel, Lake County Commissioner.
Tim Bergman, Lake County Manager.
Chris Floyd, Lake County Attorney.
Emma Godeski, Herald Reporter.
Bethany Weber, St. Vincent Hospital Board. And this is, I'm going to let you say your last name so I don't screw it up. But this is Tony with Cypress Health, the management team that we have engaged to help us.
Tony Pfaff. So it's P F A F.
And then online, John?
John Gardner, interim CEO for St. Vincent Health.
Kelly Johnson, interim CFO, St. Vincent Health.
Yeah.
Karen Underdonk, marketing and outreach and grant writing, St. Vincent Health.
Randy Thompson, Chief Clinical Officer at St. Vincent.
Jennifer Martinez, HR Director, St. Vincent Health.
Mabel?
Mabel Bogart, Lake County Public Works.
And Janine?
Janine McGee, Lake County Department of Human Services.
I think that is everyone. All right. So I'm going to start with another larger introduction of Tony perhaps and say Chris.
Feel free to ask him some questions if you like. Tony was gracious enough to be able to come join us today, so you can meet him. Some things have been reported in the paper, but Tony's been really helping us with getting things situated and providing resources to turn things around at St. Vincent. All right, do you have questions for him?
And maybe I did remember, I do remember reading the newspaper article, maybe, yeah, say a little bit more about like what your role is and timeframe and yeah.
So our, our company Cypress Health, we've been in business for about 24 years now. So we manage rural hospitals, do some consulting with that, but mostly manage. Most of our, all of our hospitals currently are in Montana that we manage, so this is our first step. First one in Colorado.
And he brings particular expertise in critical, critical access hospital, which the critical access hospital reimbursement and accounting and cost reporting with Medicare is quite complicated. So he brings us expertise in that, which is going to be very, very helpful.
I'll manage this critical access.
And are you reporting to the board or to?
To the board.
Okay. And then sort of advising interim CEO and CFOs, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we will work with Kelly and John. And I know John would like to retire again, so we'll try to get him to retire again. That board is always in control.
Antonio will be instrumental in recruiting a permanent CEO for us, so we are, we're in the process of looking for that. And that's okay. He has some very specific traits he looks for. I guess that he brings a lot of success in his hospital.
And I'll leave you business cards. You're always welcome to call me. I live in Montana, so it's, I live in town, somewhere. I grew up in Kellag, Idaho, which is, it looks just like Leadville, Chisinaut, Idaho.
So what's the, yeah, what, what do you have, I guess, on reporting of what we know?
We'll let Kelly and John take that over.
Okay.
So should I take over?
Yes.
introductory comments, actually Kelly's, Kelly being the financial person who she is will be talking the most, but I thought I'd give you some upfront comments in terms of sets the stage for, for the, for what she's presenting. You know, I, you know, I came in, gosh, it must've been eight months ago now, trying to help sort things out with, with the health center. It's obviously been an interesting time from, particularly from a financial perspective. You know, I think one of the big things that happened to the hospital in 2022 is the hospital had taken some COVID advanced funds and, and applied them to capital purchases. And then unfortunately, about the time that the 2022 tax revenue started coming into the hospital, which normally covers a lot of the operating expenses, actually went to repay the government for the COVID advances. So those, those repayment activities really put the hospital in a hole for the 2022, which is really was unfortunate. Then on top of that, I would say the financial team for the hospital in probably for the last two and a half years probably was pretty weak in terms of understanding the intricacies of critical access hospitals and reimbursement and all the credentials required. And so what we saw particularly in 20, particularly in 2022, at least in the first nine months, the hospital was providing a lot of services where A, they weren't getting reimbursed for it because the proper paperwork hadn't been processed or the reimbursement was totally, was, was totally inadequate for what the services were being provided. On top of that, there had not been, you know, and you guys experienced this, we, you know, we didn't get our 2022 audit completed or 2021 audit completed until January of this year. And then it had an impact on our ability to, to benefit from enhanced Medicare reimbursement for the extra, extra reimbursement that goes with the new capital cost. So, but you know, those things really contributed to the, the financial hole that Kelly will be presenting to you. On top of that, there were several incredibly expensive contracts that the hospital signed that had absolutely no economic benefit to the hospital. So, you know, we have spent the last six months trying to unravel those, those, those contracts. And I think, I think there's probably about two of them left that we really, that we have to get rid of. But, you know, obviously we're making, we're trying to address that. On top of that, there were some compliance issues that, that, you know, that, you know, were a concern to, to the organization. And, you know, we, we've, we've addressed all those issues, but, but one of the, one of the things that we have done is to protect the, the health center in the future is we've signed a contract with the Colorado Rural Health Center. And they've actually helped us with all of our compliance management for the hospital. So every contract we review, they're going to review that contract and compliance to make sure that, you know, represents fair market value. It's not, not in conflict with any, you know, local federal or state regulations. So I think those are all, 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 all big benefits. But obviously it was, it was 2022 is a, is a painful year. And we look at, at our financials and Kelly can give you the detail. It's, it hurts a little bit, but I think the good news is we've identified the problems and, you know, we're, we're slow, we're getting, we're addressing them. I'm hoping that we get to the end of 2023, although there'll be some financial cleanup that the number, things are going to be looking a lot better for, for the organization and the community. So with that, I will pass it on to Kelly.
Awesome. Can everybody here be okay?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Pardon the background, I'm at the hotel for CHA's conference this evening, so bear with me on that. But, but thank you so much for having us and to allow us to kind of paint for you the financial picture of everything that has transpired since we last communicated in December. So I, too, with John, came in on September 21st with my first day, hit the ground running. And it's been a financial opportunity, to say the least, in that entire process. And, you know, Tony actually said it best when we first met him as it relates to the turnaround strategy for our organization. And that is, it's a three-year program. It's a first year of discovering the problems and really figuring out where to stop the bleed and at the same time figure out where the foundation is broken and those different pieces. Then there's the year of getting everything back in alignment and stability created and figuring out what service lines should be maximized and whatnot. And then the third year is bringing back the growth mindset. And, and I, he painted that picture so amazingly in the process. And as I look at what we're doing, it, it falls into line very much with that kind of that thought process and that plan. As John mentioned, you know, when we walked in into the organization, I, I've, I've been using the phrase a lot, calling it like an onion. Every time I peel back a layer, I find more layers of opportunity. And I'm going to call them opportunity because this last week, we had the opportunity to have our revenue cycle team onsite. And they've proven my point in the sense of there is a viable system here. There is an ability for us to rebound and process, prosper. But again, it's getting those foundations in line and creating SOPs and systems and processes in place in order for this to be sustainable, to stop the cycle that continues to happen. And that, that foundation and that sustainability focuses around our current client base and the revenue cycle management of it. Don't get me wrong, there is an expense management component. However, if those expenses are incurred appropriately, they should give you a really good return on investment as it relates to a critical access hospital. Because we are cost-based reimbursed, if we leverage those costs appropriately, it should allow for us to reap the benefit and rewards of the cost report, which is something that we're really starting to see as we peel apart our organization. The, the lack of a financial statement audit for 2021 caused, you know, the, the financial hurdles that we came to you guys with back in December. It stopped our tax revenues from being dispersed to us. It stops the opportunity for us to file our cost reports appropriately. There was a lot of different things that that created. We have since got that report filed and have worked with the National Rural Health Foundation, who's funded the ability for IBALE to open up our cost reports for the last three years and refile those to maximize reimbursement because the information provided in the past cost reports lacked accuracy as it relates to patient volumes as well as our capital investment. As John mentioned, we spent a lot of COVID funds and capital equipment. But the thing is, those, that capital creates depreciation. And that is a really great reimbursement as it comes to the cost report. And those items were not picked up on that, on, on the cost report, especially for last year because it was filed prior to the audit being complete. And so we'll be able to recoup some reimbursement as it relates to Medicare specifically from that item. We've also brought in the organization called TRC, which is, stands for the Revenue Cyclist. They are our outside billing company. And I talked a lot about these at the board meeting for our hospital last month. And TRC, in, in their onsite, they came onsite and did a deep dive analysis of all of our workflows and opportunities. And as a result, we have found so many areas of growth that will allow for us to actually capture the charges for the work we are already doing. Meaning we were giving patient care, great patient care, but we weren't getting paid for it. I, I, I used a phrase, and I think it actually was in the Herald Democrat, that we gave away a lot of free services. And, and that is a true statement. I mean, we weren't reimbursed and capturing what we were spending in order to provide the care for our community. And so TRC is doing an in-depth training. They have seven different team members that they've deployed in different areas of our facility to work with our clinicians on workflow and charge capture, to work with the accounting team on terms of reporting, to work with the different payers as far as credentialing and pre-authorizations, all of the different workflows required in order for us to see that uptick in reimbursement. Also in that brainstorm and that process, we, we kind of called it the war room, for lack of better words. We were all in there for four days straight together, working on different things. But in that process, we also found some opportunities for us to, to continue to push in different departments to maximize reimbursement. We weren't taking advantage of certain areas that we have to offer specifically with the Leadville-based population. And so that is something that we're going to continue to grow and develop and build upon. When we share the financial information with you, we're going to, the reason I wanted to set the stage with this information before I shared the financial data because the question that I continually got asked since our board meeting of releasing the financials was how do we bounce back from this? How do we bounce back from a loss of that magnitude? And how you do it is through evaluation of departments and efficiencies, maximizing the revenue by the departments that can produce the revenue. But then also looking at critical service lines that really should be in Leadville and Lake County specifically that allow for us to get the reimbursement for the work that we do. And those types of things, like I said, are, haven't been fully capitalized on that so far. So with that, I don't know if I have permission, do I have permission to share my screen?
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
Perfect. I will, I'm going to be sharing the financial statements that I presented to the Board of Directors. Unfortunately, I only have one screen, so I'll have limited view of what I can see for you. So please speak up if you have questions. Can everybody see it okay?
Yep, yeah.
Perfect. So I want to preface with the 2022 financial statements. We were in a system, a financial, different financial system for 2021. I have simplified a lot of our accounting to make it easier. And so we've converted everything over to QuickBooks to have clear reconciliations and processes. So that way we can look at the information. In all of the conversion and in all of the processes of unfolding that happened in 2022, there are still, still some areas that I will continue to be reconciling and finishing with our auditors. We've engaged IBALE as our new audit firm. And we'll be working through these items. So some of these items are subject to change, but I've outlined those in the notes at the end of my presentation. So you guys know if those numbers get adjusted, what that means from a financial statement impact. But more and more information is coming available as I solidify and close out 2022. But this balance sheet shouldn't shock anybody, specifically you guys as the Board of County Commissioners purely from the conversations we had back in December. We ended the year with a negative cash balance. And I say negative, meaning that is how we reported is if everything has cleared the bank. And you guys were well aware of this opportunity because we came to you asking for support. And that's what prefaced a lot of that conversation. We do have 1.3 million sitting in accounts receivable. This is net of our contractual allowances, meaning what payers are not going to pay us for. However, this accounts receivable number is the, like I said, the area of opportunity. And we're continuing to clean up our accounts receivable aging, meaning what payers are truly going to pay us versus ones that are not. And so this number has a, a little bit of area of opportunity for finalized cleanup. And TRC continue to start the, or working through the process with me last week, we're working on it this week. And hopefully I'll have a final number for us here shortly as it relates to that. But it's pretty accurate based off of our current payer mix. And again, this is what we're expecting to get paid with an allowance against it for those that we know we won't. We've had some payers that were heavy payers in our community, such as Bright Health, who have been non-responsive as it relates to payment. However, we're getting feedback from the state as well as from the insurance commissioners that they will remit payment, but it's, it's on our aging and it's fairly old. We did start to see some payments come through on that front. But when we look at our payers and we look at who's paying us and, and when, we do have three or four that are going to pay us, but we had to resubmit the clients on paper. So it just delays the process in that. And so we're hoping to see that those, that reimbursement hit our books here shortly. Usually after it hits 120 days, we start evaluating, are we really going to collect all those funds? But those specific payers are still sitting in our accounts receivable. On December 31st, we also get to report the receivable that we put on the DLG 70 certification for our mill levy as well as the estimated mill levy or the, the estimated ambulance funds from the counties. So that's what that other receivable line item includes. It's offset by the other current liabilities. So just know that those that receivable, that's why we have to report it for audit purposes, is the, the mill size for 2023. In other current assets, we have our prepaid expenses as well as our inventory. We did finalize our inventory count and valuation, and those adjusting journal entries will be posted beginning of next week with our, with audit support. And so as a result, that other current asset number might adjust slightly, but it's not a material difference comparative to prior years on that one. Our fixed assets is obviously where most of our financial items are tied up. As you can tell, we're very illiquid and we're, we're tied up heavily in this fixed asset component. But this is where the cost report opportunity has reared its head and it's a great one for us to take advantage of. And if you look at the, the 2021 and 2022, or 2021, excuse me, filed cost report, they did not pick up all of the depreciation expense as it relates to our new hospital. And even though depreciation is not in cash, it's a cost report's best friend. And so as a direct result, it's something that we're going to be able to get an increase in Medicare reimbursement because of our investment in the new facility on that front. The other things is, is there are some items sitting here in this fixed asset item that is also tied up and related to a liability account. And so it's part of the lease, we've removed, we've removed the assets, I should say. But we, this asset bucket used to be higher if you were to look at prior year audits and as well as purchases of assets throughout 2022 because of a lease agreement we have with our assets were sold and we've leased them back. And that took place early in 2022, and that is reflected here in our balance sheet today. In our liabilities, this is where, again, you can tell from our lack of liquid position as well as our fixed assets, our offset and liabilities are, are pretty substantial. And again, it explains a lot of the picture that we shared with you guys back in December. I've shared pretty much every day since I came on board and had financial data available to me is that prior administration and leadership held bills and didn't pay vendors in order to keep operations going and they used grant money to drive operations. And so as a result, we've seen a huge accrual of accounts payable. And our credit card payable is automatically paid every 30 days. So that one incurs and goes down and incurs and goes down. So that one's not as a big of a deal. But as far as the accounts payable is concerned, this is where we're working with vendors on a payback strategy. And so right now, we're working with each of our vendors, making phone calls, working on a payback plan as it relates to that. The hard part about this opportunity is continuing to work with our revenue cycle team to make sure the revenue is coming in at a rate to honor the payback plan as it relates to accounts payable. And there is a process to doing this. We've been working with legal counsel and our strategic advisors as it relates to this. And most of theirs have been really amicable in helping us coming back, coming through with this accounts payable payback strategy. We are also working on some grant opportunities to help cover some of these costs. And we are meeting news from two of them, which will help put a pretty large dent in this account payable expense line item, which will help us move the needle forward in terms of getting back on our feet and the good part of that turnaround.
Kelly?
Yeah.
The, sorry question, on the other liabilities, I'm sorry, I, I, can you clarify the, was all the ARPA funding paid back already in those outstanding items? That was, okay.
Yeah, ARPA, all of those monies are done and dealt with. Those were taken back in 2022 and, and fully repaid. So there's none of those liabilities that sit on here specifically anymore at this point. We don't have any other outstanding liabilities on that front.
Okay. And then the, when you say the assets, the equipment, is there, this is kind of unrelated to the accounts maybe, but was there a resolution in the utilization of the equipment as far as the? What do you mean? Testing and all that.
Oh, you're talking about the high altitude. I'd asked, the, the ones that were not, that did not pass are the testing have been sent back and we are working on refunds from those vendors. So those have, we've, we've actually, they came and picked up those pieces of equipment and we have tracking numbers on checks. We just don't have them in our hot little hands yet.
Got it. Thanks.
No, thank you. Great questions. The note, is there another one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No, that was somebody outside the room.
Okay, cool. Awesome. So the next thing is our, obviously our notes payable and mortgage. This is USDA and Colliers specifically. And what I want to outline here is the instrumental process that Colliers has been doing to help with our financial turnaround. We meet with them every other week to give them a status update, key, key performance indicators that we're working on, working on with them on, as well as they've been helping facilitate our cash flow and opportunities on that front. And so in that, there's been a lot of great brainstorming that has happened from them. Usually I don't see lending partners so involved in the process, but they do want to see us succeed, which has been really helpful. They've helped us navigate so much for our organization. I know back in December, they were a really big help as well. And so we're just continuing to build that relationship. We have not deferred or had any issues as far as making our loan payment to, for our USDA loan or Colliers funded loan. But they are also helping us as it relates to our compliance requirements for our debt covenants. And so even though we're out of compliance, we are on a strategy with them as it relates to reporting out all of the changes that John and I are making. And again, that happens every other week with the, a director from, our representative from And again, that happens every other week with the director from, our representative from USDA as well as the Colliers team and their legal counsel. So it's a giant party meeting of all these different players. But again, they've been very, very supportive and helping us navigate some opportunities as well. The other line item on here, that this is the one line item that I prefaced and it's in the notes to the financials. It's on the third page. I also mentioned this in our board meeting with our St. Vincent board, is this other long-term liabilities. And here, the way Athena books revenue is if there's an account that's unposted to a patient account and not applied yet, it says it's a liability until it's applied and offsets receivables. Because of how the workflow and the imports work on that front. However, there's some reconciliation opportunities as it relates to those unpostables as well as suspended credits for our accounts receivable. So in this other long-term liabilities, there sits like six of those different types of accounts and I'm working through reconciling that. So just know that that 937 is going to change and it's going to adjust the accounts receivable number up above. It's not going to hit profit and loss specifically because it's considered an offset. But we are working on cleaning those up. So just know that when you, if you were to look at our financial statement audit when it comes out, that's where most of the change is going to happen is between those accounts. I'm trying to true up the proper reporting of that system on that front. That obviously then leads us to our net fund balance or fund balance or equity, as I call it. And that's where the 9.3 comes from. Our loss for the year was 4.2 million, and I'm going to go through what created that loss as it relates to profit and expenses. But again, I know last year there was a question as to, well, you have a high fund balance, where are those funds? The funds based off of this picture as we're painting it are tied up in our physical asset, which is where the net fund balance is driven from on that front. So just know that's where that's coming from. But we do have a really, really large loss because we're recognizing everything and getting everything cleaned up in the 2022 year. So I want to dive into that specific loss because I think it's imperative to understand. If you were to look at our profit and loss statement and you were to compare this profit and loss statement to 2021, our charges are our growth charges, meaning patient revenue, are fairly close to the same. There's a small variance. It's not huge. It's not enough to be a big noticer or change in operations or a big indicator of that. What really changed for us though is this contractual allowance bucket. And I'm using contractual allowances as a general statement. In here is technically adjustments, CICP, charity care, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there. But for the sake of simplicity, and I'm making sure everybody understands, this is the offset of getting into true net patient revenue. This contractual allowance really killed us last year. I don't have a better phrasing. I apologize for my lack of tactful delivery on the phrase there. But this is where a big hurt came from. And this is based off of what John was trying to tell you guys earlier as it relates to a lack of understanding of workflow and the financial team not being, not fully understanding what needed to happen. And what I mean by that is some strategic decisions were made with payers and/or service lines to consolidate what's called an MPI number or not credential certain payers or whatnot. And so as a result, we were treated out of network and had to write off some charges. We were not treated, we weren't able to get reimbursed at all, so we had to completely write it off. So ultimately it was either the contracts were old and they wrote it down to the old contract number or the MPI was, like our ambulance MPI is a great example, was combined with the hospital MPI, which resulted in everything being out of network, which really killed our ambulances for the last 18 months, I would argue. Those types of things are all reflective in this contractual allowance bucket. So if you were to peel apart each individual department, which is what we've been doing as a senior leadership team, you'll see the negative impact on it on these departments that should have been close to break even or better. And as a result, they weren't because of some of those decisions that were made. We've, with a lot of help of the Western Healthcare Alliance, Inova Health and TRC, which is our revenue cycle company, we have fixed a lot of this. And you can see in our, when we start, in the next two weeks, when we report out to the board, our board, the 2023 numbers, you'll start to see this number and this percentage drastically change. Our percentage of payments compared to charges in the last three months have gone up despite all of the different things that have caused our volumes to fluctuate a little bit. And so, but if you were to compare this to prior year's financial statements, this is a huge storyteller of why there's a lot of, why do you have that $4.2 million loss. The other really big thing that is another, I say item of note, and I notated this in our board presentation to our board as well, is our salary and wages and employee benefits as a relation to patient volumes and patient revenue up above. Again, if you were to compare this gross, our salary and wage cost comparative to prior year, it was a huge increase. I can't remember the exact figures. I don't want to be misquoted, but I do know, I do know that it is a huge, like right now, that this was sitting at like, I want to say 89% of revenue. Again, don't put me on the exact amount. I didn't do the math real quickly. But what I can tell you is that is way out of alignment comparative to where it should be. And since October of this last year, our average monthly payroll went from about 1.1, 1.2 million to less than about, to about 700,000 per month. So we've already made substantial moves in the right direction, and that's 400,000 a month alone. We've renegotiated benefit contracts to reduce the benefit costs as well as other pieces to really utilize our staff. Some of those staff changes were us intentionally closing service lines that were non-performing. Others were those individuals that chose to leave the organization. And we didn't replace a lot of those that chose to leave. We actually consolidated roles to become more effective and efficient by department. The only negatives of when you start cutting costs to that extent is it does have a negative implication on future cost report. Because again, money spent can equal reimbursement later. Now granted, our payer mix is a little bit more friendly this way, meaning we're about 27% Medicare. And so it's not going to be a huge feel for us as it relates to that. However, it is something to be aware of. We've been talking about that from a strategy perspective for 2023 going forward for our organization. But this again, if you were to compare this to prior years, you can see, you would see a huge uptick trend just due to adding departments that were not great choices for our organization.
Hey Kelly?
Yeah?
Can you talk about the rest of your payer mix and specifically what Medicaid is?
Yeah, Medicaid is between 23 and 25 depending on the department. And I don't have the numbers in front of me and forgive me, but I can email you an outline of what those are. I know our self-pay is about 13%, so not doing the math in my head, the difference is going to be commercial.
Okay. On that note, just a broader question for both you and John and Francine, but you know, with the the upcoming redeterminations for Medicaid clients and knowing that we are going to lose Medicaid clients, like what is St. Vincent doing to ensure that those people still have access to healthcare? And then also have you thought about that, about how it will impact your 23 revenues?
Yeah, so we're looking at a couple of different agreements. We're in negotiations with a lot of different options right now, and I can't give you a direct answer because we're still in the works. But as far as revenue is concerned, one is we weren't capturing a lot of opportunities on the Medicare and commercial side to make up for it anyway. And some of those contracts haven't been renegotiated from 2018. We're going through those processes and it should fill like that drastically, actually. The other piece that is also, as far as serving the Medicaid population, I know we started the conversations in detail last week. We have a lot we're going to be meeting on next week when TRC comes back onsite. So once I have more concrete information, I'll be able to share that with you. But it's too premature to give you a direct answer, and I apologize for being very vague. John, if you have anything to add, please do. And you're on mute if you, for John.
One of the things that, actually it comes from the House Bill 1198 last year, but there's a, the state is putting a lot of pressure. It has a great expectation on hospitals in terms of getting, getting patients plugged into the Colorado option. And so we're, actually we're having to, we're going to have to document all of our efforts to any patient who, who does not have Medicaid, document our efforts to make sure that we've verified their eligibility for Medicaid and get them enrolled in Medicaid if they're eligible. If they're not eligible for Medicaid, making sure that they get plugged into the Colorado option plan or to give them access to our discounted services. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of balls up in the air right now that will help us try to address, you know, this kind of big shift in the Medicaid enrollment.
And with that, that specific tracking as it relates to non-eligibility, if they do go on our discounted care program, if we document, the way we're documenting that, and as we continue to increase that documentation, that will also increase our reimbursement on the cost report. So we will be able to pick it up on the other side of that, which will help as well.
You mentioned earlier the, like the non-payers, like Bright Health. Sorry for my ignorance here. Is that an insurer that just isn't, like doesn't typically reimburse you all? And or what does that mean for?
No, they've been, we have a couple payers that were really honorary, and I'm sorry for my lack of technical terms, but I'm going to try to keep it as simple as possible. We have, so Bright Health, even Blue Cross Blue Shield, I'm going to use them as an example, very common one. They're a great example. In 2021 and 2020, 2021 and 2022 in Colorado specifically, because of how you had to have the Colorado identifier on those insurance cards, because they had a hard time processing claims, that payer used to pay in 30 days. It was taking about 120 days to pay us. And it was, it was at the payer level, like that insurance company was just struggling with processing the updated CPT codes for COVID testing, like a whole bunch of that specific items as well as the specific Colorado identifier. Bright Health was also an issue just because that insurance company, and John, you can tell me if I'm saying this incorrectly because I get them mixed up with another one of our insurance payers. But they also started to close down their insurance company and they were bought out by another. And in that closure, they haven't, they've delayed paying out claims. We've been, you know, we've been working with Kim at the state under HIC PLUS, and she's been working with the insurance commissioners to get us payment because we are going to see payment. It's just severely delayed. And as a result, it's delaying the transfer to the patient for the patient portion if there's a patient collectible. And so those claims are aging out at 180 days before we're starting to see them.
Okay, does that affect, I mean, are you, does that affect who you will accept as patients?
Not necessarily, no. It's, what it does affect is just cash flow. It's ultimately us having to float the expense of seeing these patients for a longer period of time. So in the hospital model, we take everybody to see a patient and then we wait 30, 60, 90 days to get paid. If it's Medicare and Medicaid, we get paid a lot faster, which is nice and helpful. It's usually 14 to 21 days. But what it does is it makes us play banker, and that's the easiest way I can put it, is we float the cost of our salary and wages until we get reimbursed from those payers.
Is that kind of the, like, it seems without the primary care, and we're curious where that's going, where it seems like that might be the nature of like operating through a hospital if somebody?
Yeah, it's the nature of our healthcare industry, that is across the board.
So Kelly, so Bright Care was a new insurance that came into the state, started out of Summit County, Peak Health, if you've ever heard that. And they apparently, so a lot of people enrolled in them as the new option through the Colorado Health Exchange. And they were very slow at processing claims and they denied a lot of claims that had to be reset back. And I can just tell you that this is a customer, a Bright Health myself, and all the frustrations I had dealing with them. And it was quite time consuming, as Kelly alluded to, and lots of delays in getting payment. There was actually a complaint filed with the state of Colorado against them, kind of a class action suit in which the state intervened, gave them a fine, gave them a timeline of, I believe, a year to get it in compliance. They felt like it was just a matter of too much growth too soon and they couldn't give up. So they gave them the ability to try to correct it, but they continued to have problems. And then as Kelly alluded to, they have withdrawn from Colorado and sold out to another company. And in doing so, they were supposed to, you know, they're supposed to have a bond with the state to be able to pay out all the outstanding claims they have. But this has been ongoing and taking quite a long time, which obviously is affecting our income and income we were anticipating getting from them, we're not getting. Luckily, again, as Kelly indicated, we have gotten some old aging amounts back. But this whole process of the insurance, which is a nationwide issue, not just in Colorado. You're just reading about this and all the medical things. The insurances are just taking longer and longer to pay, which is making it increasingly difficult, especially for small hospitals, not just here, all over to be able to float, as she says, and be the banker. It makes it difficult to meet your obligations on time, at times when all of the insurances are choosing to take later to pay.
And I was just going to chime in on that in terms of Anthem. Originally, when I first hurt my shoulder, my doctor wanted me to do some physical therapy before the surgery to keep my shoulder from freezing up. And they worked the script to St. Vincent. And then I was called and told that Anthem didn't approve it because there was another provider in town. But then I called Anthem and they said, oh no, we sent a referral. And they said they're no longer taking your insurance. So then I had to go to Parker anyway. And then I talked to the council person, they said, yeah, it was because of how long it was taking Anthem to pay on the bills that they weren't going to accept the referral from Anthem.
And just know that that's changing by the way. So if you, I used you as a case study, so thank you for being candid last week with me on that. That is going to be changing as far as acceptance of patients. So thank you for being transparent on that.
Sure. No, because I know it's an issue and obviously you provide the services, you can't afford to carry, as you said, to be the bank for your staff for so long, but that obviously is a disconnect with the insurance. And part of this, because I am one of those people who moved to Colorado and my insurance has always been with Anthem, and I have a VA for Virginia as my identifier instead of CO. And so I think that's part of the issue.
Yeah, it's just so complicated and so many things that have to take place to get payment and to, or for them to be able to deny it when they've already said they were going to cover services basically by contracting with these. It's very frustrating.
Right.
And Kelly is delving into all of this stuff, God bless her, that she, she finds this kind of stuff fun. And Tony too. So yeah, it's very time consuming trying to sort it all out.
What is, have you all come up with a new operating plan as far as the reimbursements and or the oversight across? Or is that continuing to develop?
It's heavily in process. So like as far as like our strategic revenue cycle plan, I mean, we brought TRC in to help us maximize using our electronic health record because it's not been used to its best ability since we even implemented back in 2018. And so we identify a huge list of opportunities and we're prioritizing those. And each of the TRC team members is working with the individual departments on starting to fix those. That includes everything from checking in a patient properly at the front desk to properly scheduling patients when they walk in the door and or call ahead to schedule to how we use templates and charts in Athena and the electronic health record to how we connect procedure codes to those templates. The claims go out the door, drop clean without a lot of scrubbing ahead of time. So right now, there is a plan, but it's a multifaceted plan because there's a lot of areas of opportunity. As far as the oversight for specific payers, we're working on a reporting tool, which I have access to now. We got that built out last week that allows for me to look at claims, charges, payments and adjustments daily by payer, by specific service line. So we can evaluate if we need to get a hold of payers and what we need to be pushing for. The hardest part is some of these payers are large. I mean, if you talk to even, you know, in the Grand Junction areas, I met with Brian Johnson of Intermountain Health as well as I met with Chris Thomas, the CEO of Community Hospital. I mean, both of them are pressing lawsuits against these payers in order to pay because they're not being compliant with them. They're a huge health system. So it's not just the St. Vincent thing. It's a healthcare issue. However, that's why, like for example, I'm in Denver this week with Colorado Hospital Association because they are our advocate for the little guy that can't, we can't afford to slap lawsuits on these payers. We're trying to make sure we're being effective. And so that's where CAJ becomes our advocate and Kim at HIC PLUS has been an advocate for some of the payers as well. And so between these different players, we're hoping to see some changes. But a lot of it starts with behavioral changes of everybody at the beginning of seeing a patient, right? Because in my opinion, revenue cycle is the minute a patient calls to send an appointment. And a lot of people don't see registration as the revenue cycle, but it is. And I know from our internal St. Vincent structure, those roles haven't been reevaluated or taught. And, um, I know from our internal St. Vincent structure, those roles haven't been reevaluated or talked about. And so we spent last week with every single human being, um, on site at St. Vincent. Interviewing them about what they do every day and how they're working and what they're doing, and we're redeveloping the whole workflow. Um, so it's kind of like blowing up the process and starting over, and I, I don't like to use that terminology, but it's the best way of looking at it. And streamlining these areas, because inefficiency, when it comes to providers and not protecting providers' time, is reducing reimbursement. And that's, like you had mentioned, um, Commissioner Mudge, about, uh, our clinic and our primary care. And that is one of our biggest areas of opportunity, is we're not protecting our providers' time, we're doing a lot of administrative work. And so we're making some strategic decisions that will allow for them to see patients and, and really provide patient care, which is what they love to do. And streamlining the workflow, we're using the, uh, revenue cycle team that is more administrative in nature. Which allows for us to see the patients and not turn away patients at our facility. Um, which will increase volumes, which increases reimbursement, which will help us make that clinic profitable in nature. Which is part of the strategic move and in the announcement we made last week about moving the clinic back into the legacy building.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, um, so you talked about the contracts and, and the things that are sort of within your control about the NPI. Numbers and things like that. Were those primarily with private providers?
Not all, um, unfortunately. Um, so for an example, the ambulance was combined with the hospital and it was for all payers. Or in the process, it's been filed and all of those things have been corrected and, but we're still waiting. And they'll drop the claims once, upon data filed, which we did three months ago. We're starting to see the reimbursements come back, but for all of twenty twenty-two, ambulance specifically was considered out of network, which really hurt us.
And out of network for private, or was that? So that was for Medicaid and Medicare as well? Okay. Are you working with Array on that to try to get any of those claims honored?
Yes, and they have allowed us to drop a lot of them to paper, which has been helping us. And we've been, we received a huge amount of payment, I say huge, huge, everything. For me right now, everything's huge, so bear with my phrasing, but we did receive compensation for quite a few of those claims, uh, the last two weeks. Um, from the paper claims we're dropping. A lot of them have, the same goes with like behavioral health. Um, but before we chose to, um, close down that service line. Um, most of the behavioral health work done last year was done uncredentialed, which meant we didn't get reimbursed for it. I, that's the eighteen months of free services. When I said that phrase, I also think that was in the paper as well. That's what I was referring to, is the lack of credentialing on that front. Um, because of the lack of credentialing, uh, the, a lot of those payers have been working with us. Um, now we've determined cost benefit of chasing those two, right? Because sometimes it's not worth it. But for those that we have deemed worth it, we have dropped them to paper and they've, they said that they would honor them in the next forty-five days. So we are seeing some of those reimbursements come back through the door, which is, again, part of our plan.
So I just want to see, i- is TRC then helping you with credentialing now? And where did you identify as the problem with credentialing?
Yeah, no, great question. So, uh, TRC is helping a little bit, but actually WHA is our main resource for credentialing. Um, again, when I first started, there was a lot of players involved in revenue cycle, too many, in my opinion. They were pulling resources in a million different directions and not streamlined. So now they're all on the same page. WHA is right now helping us with pre-authorizations as a temporary fix, and then also with credentialing. Um, TRC is helping us with entire revenue cycle management, okay, from start to finish, and training our clinicians and whatnot. TRC, just for reference, they all worked for Athena, which is our EHR, which is why we brought them in. That's their specialty. Um, so somebody that knows the system really effectively. But what has been nice with WHA helping with the credentialing side is TRC is finding something fishy, they're sending it to WHA to review. And right now, WHA is going provider by provider, payer by payer, and we have a massive chart right now. This is in process, this has not been done, this has been done, they're honoring back payment. Um, and then they're guiding Willie Ray, our Director of Revenue Cycle, and her team on which ones to fight for and push on paper. And which ones to just walk away from. Um, and I'm getting a weekly report out of that. So that a way I can help advise cash flow and, and management of those decisions.
And is the long-term plan to have WHA on contract to make sure that credentialing is done correctly going forward? Or is there, um, the plan to build up internal capacity for that? Because that's, that's a tough thing to manage and stay on top of.
It's tough to have internally, especially, I mean, we, we're in a small town, right? And so finding the right resources, and I'm not saying somebody in, in town couldn't handle it. What I mean is finding the talent, putting them in the right seats on the bus, and such a small resource pool, right? Um, so WHA has a long-term agreement with us as it relates to that, because they already do our bad debt anyway as part of our membership. And so, um, but what we're doing is, there is more oversight from myself as the CFO, as well as the Revenue Cycle Director. And then also for onboarding any specialty, new physicians, um, transitions of physicians leaving and new ones coming in. Locums, all those things, there's an actual formal onboarding process. That is where we got most of our pickle last year. I mean, contractual adjustments, the reason it's so high, is we onboarded new service lines without properly doing the register, like the proper process of sending them on.
Right.
And so like John and I are right now strategizing on, we're bringing in some new docs, we've been doing some new procedures. We're looking at locums, like all these different players. Well, and we don't just hire them and bring them and then do the stuff after the fact. We're saying, okay, we have a physician that wants to come onboard in six months, what's the checklist that has to happen every month before then? And, and, and those steps are now happening, and that's how it should have been done all along. Um, and as a result, because we are using third parties, we're creating statement of procedures. And that should give us the institutional knowledge, as us as interns, myself included, transition out. There is a resource that knows the data, because that's also something that's happened a lot in any rural hospital in Colorado. Because I support a couple different facilities, and some of them I've been supporting since twenty seventeen and older. Um, and working with them, we see a lot of turnover in the C-suite. Purely because, and I, 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 I use the phrasing of, they do two years and move on. And it's only because these rural facilities, one is, it's hard to find housing, we, we all know that. Two, we also know that a lot of them that are going in the rural space are starting their career there in order to move elsewhere. And so with that turnover, John, it's, my mission is to create stability, right? Because we, we know there's a cycle. How do we stop the cycle? Well, you need to part, correct partners, and that's why Cypress is such a great, uh, resource for us. Is as a partner that we know can be there, even if there's transition internally.
And so was WHA not in place before? Are they a new?
They, they were one of the vendors, however, they were not utilized appropriately. That's the thing, is TRC was actually a vendor already as well, but they were used to train another vendor instead of doing what they're good at.
Okay, so there wasn't anybody really looking at that, um, NPI work before?
No, and I mean, to be fully transparent, I mean, y'all know me, I've been transparent pretty much since the day I walked in the door. Um, the, they, they didn't even have financial statements, so nobody really knew anything.
Um, and the last question I have then is if the Medicaid and Medicare payments are more timely. And, um, do not spend as much time on your books, do you have a sense of what portion of the Medicaid and Medicare population of Lake County? You're able to work with, or is there, do you know where you're at in that? And are you, um, have in the works any plans to try to make sure that those Medicaid and Medicare dollars stay local?
Great question. And we started that conversation last week, but we don't have a full plan. We did talk, we actually met, um, TRC, um, as well as myself. We met, uh, twice with, uh, Dr. Lisa as well on this whole process. And so we are in the, the data gathering stage now that we actually have data, which is an amazing thing, um, to make decisions with. And so I think once we, we, um, John and I, we, we talked as a senior leadership team yesterday about going department by department, figuring out what our population is. What is our availability as far as the true capacity, if we were to streamline these processes, to know what we can truly serve? Because I know for a fact, based off the data that I now can see, and it's been a long time coming. And I feel like there's, I've still only scratched the surface on analysis, so please hear me from that perspective. But I also know that in looking at this, our clinician, everything from a nurse. All the way through the, the, um, the physician, and even, you know, ancillary service providers. Are not able to see what they truly are capable of seeing as a patient, not because we want to churn and burn. But because they're doing administrative items they should not be doing to begin with, or their workflow is broken. And so as we go department by department, we're finding, holy, why are we not seeing as many patients even close to the average, or whatever that looks like? And that will then allow for us to figure out what is our payer mix, um, in terms of those available seats. What patients are coming in as drop-ins versus scheduled visits? Because I know that is something we're working on from a clinic and primary care perspective. And then also, how do we interplay these, these departments better? Meaning if somebody presents themselves in the emergency department, how does that follow-up actually happen in the clinic? Um, for later, for, for the patient to get the continuum of care that they need? But at the same time, we need to make sure that ED is educated on the workflow in the clinic, so that a way they don't put them in the wrong spot. Take up a forty-five minute visit when it should have been a fifteen-minute follow-up, or, or whatever that might be. And all of that, from a, an English perspective, translates to dollars, right? For us, to be able to continue to serve a community. And so that's where, like, that's why I was such a huge advocate for bringing TRC in. Because they, they could, they could see how the templates are broken, so it's not working effectively. I know enough to know it's not working. I can't tell you what in the template's wrong though, because I'm not a coder or a builder. They were able to clearly say, oh, you're missing, this is not set up, and so we're deploying them to support in that process.
Well, and that's why your cost of services is so high proportionately. Um, what is the industry standard for cost of services for a hospital or, or practice this size, not just hospital?
I don't have that number right in front of me. I, I'm going to lean on John or Tony, if you guys have that number. I just know, I usually see, like, I just use direct costs as far as like salary, wages and benefits as a direct cost to services. It's usually about fifty-six to sixty-four percent, and if we're in the eighties, that tells you how the rest is on the line. However, I don't have the full statistic, uh, in my brain at the moment.
And is there, I, you talked about it, but is there a goal, a, you know, a plan to get that to a certain?
Yes. So I've created a dashboard of key performance indicators. I'm working on them by department right now. I'm starting my department head meetings today, um, and I'm meeting with each of the department's heads going forward on a monthly basis. And each of them is going to have KPIs related to their department and its impact on the overarching goal. And then the senior leadership team will have those key performance indicators to continue to keep tabs on. Now, it's hard a little bit on average, because our pair mix is actually kind of funky for a cop. But at the same time, if we know what our norms were prior to, you know, twenty twenty, I always like to use prior to COVID. Kind of see what some of the patient volume should have been, look at the population, and then we look at total overarching Colorado performance of cause. We should be able to find a really good way of measuring where we sit on that front. But I also know, like I said, my eyes are wide open, like every week, I'm like, I learn something new about an opportunity, um, that we could be doing. And in doing this whole analysis, especially last week with the Revenue Cycle Team on site, they proved my point, that this is a viable organization. They're like, oh, you're missing, you're not doing, like, we have a list. I just, we now, we now know what we have a problem with, it's getting it fixed, and what are the, what's the timeline to get it all turned around. All right, great questions. I appreciate you asking them. Thank you, Ms. Mickey, I appreciate it. Uh, the other items that I just want to outline, so everybody kind of knows what else we're looking at here. You know, with, with increased salary and increased department cost comes increased overhead, right? Uh, and so we saw an uptick in terms of purchase supply, central supply, or purchase services, central supplies, professional fees and whatnot, proportional to that. If you look at the budget that we approved in December, that's actually more in alignment with where we're going. Um, because of the changes that we were making as far as departments are concerned. Um, when I had created and worked with the department heads on those individual budgets. Um, we specifically were looking at, okay, if, you know, since we are not going to offer behavioral health as a service line right now. What does that decrease the other overhead items as it relates to that? Like those different pieces to it. So, um, we have obviously inflation from the choices that were made in twenty twenty-two. But if you look at twenty twenty-three and when we release financials, um, at the board meeting next week, you'll start to see trends of those changing. And a lot of it comes down to, right now, as a senior leadership team meeting, we, daily to talk about our cash flow. And it's like, okay, what are we spending? What is it producing? What are we spending? I mean, that is the question we're asking. And, and Jim has been instrumental on our purchasing and materials management side of making sure we're working with vendors. Um, that are honoring, you know, group, group purchasing prices, um, we are part of a GPO. But also looking at vendors that maybe were not necessary. Um, I know we obviously have that huge accounts payable, we still get to pay back vendors that we're no longer using. But we've done a whole bunch of scrubbing our, our expenses and really only leveraging the expenses we need. To truly derive clearing and clear operations. And it's a question we ask daily. Um, we get to, we got to ruffle some feathers in that process, meaning we're changing things and whatnot. The whole goal is, we want to make sure this hospital's around for our community to be able to use it and leverage it. Um, the other items, the other non-operating income and expenses, these are usually related to grant management. As well as other, um, like provider fees and whatnot. This is also, um, you know, recognition of mill EMS income, the, the administrative fees from county for administering those things. All of those that reside in here. Um, so from a non-cash perspective of the four-point-two million dollar loss, two-point-one of that is non-cash related. It's depreciation-driven, that is helpful on our cost report, but it's not helpful from a profit and loss perspective. Which this does put us at that four-point-two million dollar loss on that front for last year. Um, and again, I, I've been asked, I was asked in our board meeting, I was asked at Community Coffee last week, how do you bounce back from that? And specifically, all the questions that Janine had asked, outlines how you bounce back from it. It's really cleaning up every single service line and the processes in those service lines, which we are attacking every single day. Um, as part of this, this turnaround strategy. Um, and a big part of that is Cypress Health and, and, you know, Tony's involvement as well as TRC and the Revenue Cycle Management. And then working with our internal teams and really evaluating how to leverage each other differently. I, I feel like, uh, there's been a huge shift internally, culturally, on leveraging each other and, and helping be more effective. So that a way, we aren't creating a culture of burnout, but at the same time, we're not overstaffed and utilizing resources ineffectively. Um, and then, of course, the notes are just telling you where I'm still cleaning up things. So that way it's fully transparent that, you know, I, I continue to find some cleanup opportunities in our trial balance. And I'm working with our new auditors on that process. Uh, but over our, overall, the financials that we did release are materially close to where we stand for this. So I'm going to stop sharing so I can see faces and open it up to questions.
I don't necessarily have a, um, a question for you, per se, Kelly. I just would like to hear from, um, Francine and perhaps John on the process that the hospital went through in engaging Cypress. And where we might be able to find some credentials for Cypress management.
John, do you want to?
Yeah, actually, it's interesting, you know, because we have debt through the Collier's mortgage and the USDA. The, the loan agreement, they're, you know, they, they actually could have mandated that we, they, they could impose a management company on us. Whether we wanted to go through a process or not. They gave us a very strong suggestion that we take a look at Cypress. So, uh, you know, and, and, because apparently they had seen them on some turnarounds in the past. So we, obviously, we took a look at them. I know that Francine in particular went above and beyond in terms of reaching out to past clients of Cypress. To, to, you know, kind of get feedback on, on what they, what they had done. And, and, uh, and if one client apparently had used Cypress and then we're done with them. And then had them come back later on, so they, obviously, they, uh, had the good reputation. So it was, obviously, our circumstances were unique, just because we, you know, we had a creditor who said, you know, you, you know, there's a pathway. We really think you need to be taking, uh, and so that this guy, how we ended up with Cypress. And I have to honestly, having, in my career, having worked, having observed other management companies, Cypress is, is. This, this opportunity to work with Cypress is a great deal for the hospital. I, you know, having, having seen what QHR and CHS, uh, who are management companies do. You know, they, they have high, they have high management fees, and then on top of that, they have, there's always additional add-on expenses. That, to, to kind of aggravate the, the cost of that management expense. And, and the Cypress, I'd say the Cypress deal, in terms of, I think the management expense is incredibly reasonable. And it, it is almost all-inclusive, though, I don't, there may be just a couple other opportunities where there's add-on. So I think, I think it's, it's, it's the perfect arrangement for the hospital as they, as we work on this turnaround.
Okay, and, and are the, the credentials or the references made available to the public?
There can be.
Yeah, I think.
I think that depends up to the individual references, if they prefer. That would be a question for them, but we certainly can.
We just, we just can't, like, find a website, we can't find any information, so, like. So, like, I mean, any information would be super helpful to have some transparency about.
It's actually a question that came up with him because we couldn't find anything a lot on him. And the things we could find, we had some questions about, and he clarified that. And then, as John said, we did a lot of, he provided us some references. We called those. I actually came to know some other things and called and got a lot of great information, and Kelly did as well. Did a lot of internet scouring to see what would come up. And we came to find out that what Colliers was telling us seemed to prove out. And in particular, we really felt that Tony's focus on rural hospitals and cause is what this hospital needed and has been missing over the years. Because as you're learning, and in all truthfulness, as the board is learning now, we've always known about the cost report, but haven't known about how strategic filling out the cost report is. It's not just about putting your numbers in from your audit. It's so much more complex than that, and Tony has been educating us on that, and Kelly and John as well. And so that background that he brings is really the alignment that we felt that we needed. Because, you know, there have been management companies in the past, but they've all been much larger companies. They have different operating models. They don't necessarily specialize in critical access hospitals. And they come in and run us according to their type of hospital, which is not what we are.
Right.
And that is really, and so that was a big process. And then, having spoken with Tony, and as John alluded to, we grilled him a lot about fees because we just haven't ever really seen a contract like this, like, okay, so what's extra? That's all included. What's extra? What's extra? And it's spelled out very clearly in the contract. But he doesn't, he doesn't really do marketing. It's all kind of by word of mouth, and that's how we had to vet him.
And you're well capacitated, if you want to talk to somebody or the world.
No, I mean.
We don't advertise very intentionally.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's just like, if you search for healthcare consultant, management consulting firms, like, a plethora of options come up. And so, just to know if you have any informations or any, like, like press or any media or anything, like, it just somewhat comes up.
Stay out of the newspaper.
Yeah, I mean, and it can come up as a red flag if you're not in the newspaper for positive things. You know, just not having.
We don't want to be in the paper. We want the hospital, in the neighborhood.
Sure.
If you research our hospitals, you'll find a different.
Yeah, I just mean that there's not any way for, like, Jane Q. Public to say, like, oh, he, he worked at this hospital and I'll, I'll be able to look at that hospital and see information. But there's not any way to actually find that information out.
Well, I'm glad my strategy's working.
I mean, maybe.
Well, it's intentional. That's the way we want it. So it's, we have a website and all that, but that isn't, we're more worried about managing the hospitals than our own advertising.
So what hospitals have you worked at?
All of them?
Yeah.
Just ones we're at now.
I don't know if you can give, maybe ones that you're currently at, or?
The ones we're currently at are Deer Lodge Medical Center.
Where's that located?
Deer Lodge, Montana.
Okay.
Ruby Valley Medical Center, which is in Sheridan, Montana. White Sulphur Springs, Montana, which is in White Sulphur Springs, Montana. But they're all Montana at the moment. Some Big Sandy Medical Center in Big Sandy, Montana. We've been in Hason, North Dakota, Wyoming, you know, Liddell for a long time. Oklahoma, but that was a long time ago.
We can probably send you the kind of the letter of introduction and background that we received from Tony that lists out those particular, some of those particular hospitals. And also, you had a hospital mentioned in the top one hundred.
We've had, yeah, one in the top five this year, one in the top one hundred.
Which one was in the top five?
Deer Lodge.
Deer Lodge, okay.
And they've also just built an addition onto one of their hospitals because they've been able to expand, grow the demand for need. And they're really in, this is the other kind of compelling issue about his company is they're in areas that are really probably considered frontier, even more than rural frontier areas because there's so much distance between places and such small populations. And he's really been able to help turn those hospitals around and help keep them for the community, so.
Did you have a question, Chris?
Well, no, I was just going to add, you know, because there was collusion to positive or negative press or whatever. And this is the first time that St. Vincent's has brought some other entity into managing or the hospital and stuff.
Cure jar.
Yeah, yeah. Did not go that great. So have you had experiences where your clients have not been satisfied with your services? And if so, how has that worked out?
No, we have never had, we've never had one fail. We've left. But I shouldn't say no. We had a hospital in Oklahoma that we didn't like what the board was doing, and they weren't willing to change, so we left. But we've left some. Hason, North Dakota, we left, but they're probably still one of my best references I have.
So what is, what is your initial response to anybody doing a quick website search and?
You won't find much.
Coming up.
Hopefully, you'll never find a picture of me. I try really hard.
What about, I mean, there are, there's things around Medicaid and Deer Lodge, wasn't it?
Deer Lodge, yeah.
Yeah, is that, do you have any response?
I don't remember, I don't remember seeing anything on Medicaid in Deer Lodge.
Are we talking about the?
The whistleblower.
Yeah, there, there was a lawsuit, apparently filed by a whistleblower.
Oh, yeah. That was actually in Florida.
But the Montana company was named as a party as well.
Yeah, and it was dropped shortly after that.
Dismissed.
It was settled, and I get it wrong every time, settled without their ability to file it.
Yeah, because it was the court granted motions to dismiss without prejudice, meaning that the plaintiff whistleblower could have brought the case back. And so, in those situations, it's, yeah, it's usually prudent to resolve it versus having them.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And we were aware of that and questioning them about that. We found it, the one thing I'll say about the internet search, you'll find it, you'll find other companies with similar names that are not his company. And we really had to work to ferret that out. And that was a question we brought up for him because he said he was just in Montana, but then we would find other companies that had filed in other states and other things. And we had to ferret on, they're not affiliated. That is something that comes up when you search for Cypress.
Yeah, there's a lot of Cypress cells. We're the only one in Montana.
And not related, or is it an umbrella?
Yeah, they're not related.
Okay.
Deer Lodge is our oldest hospital. We've been there twenty-four years. So we've grown it from about one-point-two million to forty.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
One question's come up, and so I appreciate the, well, a lot of the detail and sort of the confidence that there is a viable concern here, you know, a viable hospital. One question, and I don't know, like, sort of, the new hospital facility, is that the right-sized facility, do you feel like, or, you know?
Yeah, the simple answers know it's small.
Too small, okay. Because, I mean, I think they're, you know, again, just like tongues wagging in the community. It's like, oh, we don't need this fancy facility.
I get that in other facilities. If you are, Deer Lodge Hospital, when you go to their website, it's a beautiful hospital. But I think if anything, and I told Charles this, Charles is a gentleman from Colliers, said it, and it says, my first impression was, we built it too small, and we'll have, it needs to be bigger. And that, I said the same thing in Sheridan, Montana, when we started there. My first comment was, it's too small, we're going to add beds in a couple of years. And we just started our addition. So I think this, this will be the same issue. It's too small, we're going to have to do it bigger.
So too small mostly on bed count, or, I mean, does this sort of have the right, again, I'm not an expert in different service lines and what facilities or, you know, rooms or equipment are needed to support them?
Makes more sense to me if everything's under one roof. When you have things scattered, it just is a very efficient.
Like, primary care in the same location?
Everything needs to be under one roof. So I think that, that should be the ultimate goal, but that's, you know, that's my goal. I have to convince the board that's the right thing to do, but.
Well, actually, we had done strategic flooding. Started it a few years ago, and there was already talk of, you know, adding a second kind of wing on. But I think the thing that is really missing in the whole reason that I got on the board was for the senior care, assisted living type deal, the ability to have what is called your beds in a hospital setting, not necessarily a nursing home, which we used to have here. And we're closed down when the West Quorum was here because of a boiler issue. So, yeah, I would tend to agree with Tony. But when the hospital was built, it's my understanding, there was a very deep kind of analysis done about rightsizing the hospital. And they felt like the twenty-five beds that we had at the time was too big and that this was more appropriate, I think. Especially given that our community is growing intensive.
So, Tony, with the surgical suites that aren't being used, are those able to be repurposed?
It's not that they're not being used, it's that some of the equipment is, can't be used. So there are other specialties, other things going on happening through specialty clinics that are utilizing those spaces.
Okay.
I think surgery on a long-term, even in a midterm basis, is an important aspect.
Yes.
We want to utilize that space.
I agree, wholeheartedly. I was like, the space will be utilized. We're already moving things and using space differently just in the last couple of months.
On both the new site and the old?
The old. Yes.
And then, another question is, just sort of curious, my understanding is, right now, the hospital's independent. And the question is, like, what are the pros and cons of being a part of a larger network? You know, we're in, I don't know if this is a proper term, but like, we'd be like a feeder hospital into a larger network.
Yeah, our company, we're, our mission is to help invent a hospital state. And if that's not feasible, for whatever reason, you know, we can help get affiliated with somebody. But I think if you want local control, independence is the way to go. Is your, if you were with Intermountain Health or Centure or whoever, they, their goals are not going to be the same as your goals. I think you stay independent as long as you humanly can. And there's no reason you can't on a very large basis. Want to use them, the nice part about being independent is, you're independent, you can use services from everybody. So you want to.
To affiliate with the other.
And there's affiliations of them, there's affiliation. So we want to be on the left side of the affiliation curve and utilize all of them to whatever they're willing to give us.
Yeah, and by local control, you mean just having, like, the board would have more control over what service lines?
The board has all control over the service lines. Whereas if you. They have control over everything.
Yeah.
I work for them. We're there to give suggestions and then to give, you know, give options, suggestions, and then tell what the ramifications are if you build down one path or the other.
To expand on your question a little bit, Jeff, I don't think, you know, that the a larger affiliation will, like, forever be ruled out. And as we continue, we can continue with Tony and continue to show progress and be sustainable. You know, you can't, you can't always take all the options off the table just because that's what they would want. So if that becomes a conversation that needs to be held again, but again, to kind of past situations that, you know, those past situations haven't led to stability in the hospital system.
Yeah.
So I don't know that that's the end.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't, it wasn't like a rhetorical question. I mean, I'm just curious.
It's just badly.
Yeah, yeah.
If you need somebody else's wallet, you know, that's not a bad thing.
Yeah.
But you're going to lose as a result of that, because their goal is to take services away.
Sort of like centralize and streamline stuff.
So they like to do that larger?
Yeah, they like feeding the mothership, and that's their goal.
Yeah.
So do you have to do a new community health assessment, health needs assessment? Or when is your?
Every three years.
Every three, and when was the last one done for St. Vincent's Health?
Must have been twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
We did it in Karen. Not twenty twenty-two, it was, is Karen still on? Because we did it in association with the health department. When the assessment came out about, you know, what the community was concerned about. It wasn't even really healthcare, it was housing, childcare, and wage.
And what? What was the wage?
I was going to say mental health, too.
Yeah.
So that is what our community assessment was built around. We collaborated with them, and that's what came out of it.
So this will be, so this year, you'll need to do one, since you did one in twenty twenty?
I said twenty would have to be done by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
I think it was twenty.
Yeah.
And do you plan, I mean, I think, well, it helped presented to us that that would be another partnership, right?
I believe it will.
Do you need anything different?
That's a great question. I'm sorry, I don't think Karen's on anymore. But great question for Karen, because she primarily facilitated that, she would have the appropriate response.
It's not, I mean, it's not unusual to do a partnership. I think it actually makes, I think it makes great sense rather than everybody doing it in their own styles.
I think perhaps in this instance, it would be beneficial for the hospitals to do one outside of collaborating with public health because that overarching picture of public health may be different than services that the hospital.
We actually did do community focus groups in concert with that. When the Strangness Act first came, there were a number of community focus groups. We did them at, we did them through Community Coffee, we did surveys and identified what the community said their primary needs and wants were. And that's what was driving the strategic plan. At the time, but again, the whole strategic plan needs to be updated as well because we're in totally different situation.
Uh, yeah, thanks.
You always take me if you have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, good to meet you.
I'm up late at night, so. Kelly was talking to me at eleven last night.
Do you have an estimate of when you would have departmental budgets complete? Maybe that's a Kelly question?
That's a Kelly question.
So we can see a budget for the ambulance?
Yeah.
That will kind of follow up, depending what the recommendations are coming out of the re-tech as well.
Okay.
But I'll let Kelly respond to that. I know she's begun work on that.
Yeah, I'm meeting with all the department heads first before I just go and send them out to everybody to make sure I interpreted everything correctly. And those meetings are starting this week, and they go for the next three weeks. And then afterwards, we can talk about the departmental budgets.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Kelly.
And to be clear, I'm using them by billing departments specifically since those are what the data is available as far as tracking. It's not like all the sub-departments, because I don't have, I don't bill that way. So what I did is I mapped revenue to expenses in each of the revenue-producing departments, if that makes sense. And then I have over-credit its own department.
When should we, I mean, the three-week time period, I know you threw out there, but we just want to make sure to have, like, a productive conversation sooner than later around the ambulance and our relationship with y'all. When do you think that?
Well, I think a lot's going to be driven by Thursday's presentation. So I would argue, I want to, I know they sent out a draft of that about thirty minutes before this call conversation. So I think after we see what re-tech recommendations are and we map through that, we can definitely talk about it. I know from a financial perspective and the information. I know from a financial perspective and the information that I shared with the retech team, the ambulance has very, very small loss last year. It had a larger loss of the allocate overhead and what is needed to manage the, the revenue as far as the ambulance is concerned. So when you, when you allocate overhead, it's like 400,000 and change loss for 2022. But again, 2022, like everything wasn't built out effectively. So it's, it's really hard when we look at that and know that when I created the budget that was approved in December, we had no financials and I created it from scratch. So there's some opportunity that I want to meet with Tony on and his team, get the retech data, get TRC's updated statistics and we can, if we need to reevaluate and reapprove the budget, we can. I just know that if I looked at the financials today compared to the data I had in December when I created a budget, I actually have financials today. I didn't have financials when I created the budget. So.
Right.
Right. So I believe that Karen or John had reached out to Tim about a possible meeting next week after the retech, retech or initial conversation.
Yeah.
I don't know, but if it seemed like the dates were maybe a bit challenging.
Yeah.
So, um.
Like a follow-up conversation to the retech?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, looking, it would be good, I think, for us to look at that three weeks out and see if we could get something on the calendar. It's very challenging for our board. We all work jobs and have businesses that we need. So daytime things in particular are challenging for us. So the sooner we can get something scheduled and make plans for it, it would help us a lot.
Sure, sure.
Any other, any other questions right now? I think Thursday will be great. It will be a conversation.
Yeah, I think so too.
Are you guys planning on that as a work session on Thursday?
Yeah, I think we have it posted for all three of us to attend. Yeah. Sounds good.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks for making the time.
Thank you guys.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Thank you.
And Tony is, is planning to be here most of the time for our, our board meetings. So again, if you want to have conversations with him, although we're having challenges, we're probably going to have to change our regular board meeting date and time because he has prior commitments with other facilities. Okay, all kind of tend to meet in the same last week or the month.
Okay.
For financial reasons.
I'm happy to stop in. I can get what your schedules are and like, I can stop in early.
Excellent. Great. Well, thanks very much. And we'll see you Thursday.
Sounds good. Thanks, you guys.
Thanks, everybody online. Thank you, John.
Kelly, thanks, John.
Thanks, Janine.